Right? Okay.
Special meeting, the Smithville Town Council, March 1st, 2021. Madam President, will you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Lord, assistify Holy Spirit of Council all those who are serving in decisions of authority and responsibility. If I can read you into the flag.
Bye. To the Republic, for which we stand. I want to. Justice for all.
We'll perform, oh, sorry, getting to my sub role call, please.
Miss Al?
Yeah.
Mr. Carbo?
Here.
That name, yeah?
Here.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Biragad?
Yeah. Open forum, as soon as we're around there, a little 42 dash 46 dash six. Is there anybody out there this evening that would like to be heard in open forum? Anybody have any like, uh, have a question?
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, go ahead.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Barely, and I have my volume up at 99.
Cynthia, can you hear me?
Me, yeah, barely. I can hear you, but not as good as I usually can.
How about now, touch there?
No. It's the same.
Hold on a minute.
And I have it on my highest, too.
I'm talking about my, uh, hold on.
Can you hear me?
Is that clear? Yeah. Very, very low. Do you have the microphone, um, hooked up to the laptop?
I see that I, I was trying to work on a couple of technical difficulties.
Right now?
Cynthia, how about this testing?
Still sounds, doesn't sound as good as last week.
Still very muffled.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys a lot of quiet.
Joanne?
Yeah.
You know how we put, oh, I can hear you good. You, you know how we put the microphone into the laptop? Is that not working? I know your laptop's not working, but can you, um?
Yep, I'm doing that right now.
Cause that, that's the, that's the part that goes through the speakers, and that's how we can hear you. Oh, you're turning it up. There you go. Talk now. Say, say something else, John.
Testing one, two. Cynthia, can you hear me?
Better. It's better.
Yeah, that's better.
Yep.
Well, how was that? Can you hear me?
Yep. What I, what I wanted to add under the open forum was I was gonna ask that we take a moment of silence in memory of Rick NATO, longtime town solicitor who recently passed away.
I think that's an excellent idea. Just give us one minute to situate it over here.
It's echoing. Somebody needs to shut off their volume.
Let you see this.
Yeah.
Right now?
Testing.
Yes, better.
Okay. All right, I apologize. Uh, we tried to do this during an open forum during a moment of silence, a moment of breath.
Oh, it's echoing again. Sorry.
How about now, can you hear me?
Okay, better.
So anyway, I would like to take a moment of silence. I could just have all stand for a moment, and I'm, uh, Rick NATO passed away recently after a great battle of Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Echoing.
Okay, now is there anybody else out there? Wasn't that we had a little time to kill? Uh, anybody else out there, uh, that would like to be heard during open forum at this time? No? Cynthia, does anybody have their hand up?
I don't see anyone with their hands up. Mr. President.
Cynthia, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Does anybody, uh, that's what we all said, nobody wants to be heard during open forum?
There's no hands up, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on then to the first agenda item. North Smithville Town Council is sitting as a board of licensed commissioners. Discussion by council vote on other action on request of outdoor church services with audio at Igniting Life, Praise and Worship Center at 233 Eddie Dolly Highway, two Saturdays a month from May to August, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Pastor, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, is there anything you'd like to, like to say at this time before we, uh, start discussing this?
Um, um, no, i- i- it's, um, straightforward. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I think that what I can say is that, um, it, you know, cause of this hard time, uh, that every, that we're living right now, we wanna bring an option, um, to the community. Um, you know, uh, having the service outside is just giving them an option. That way they feel safe in their vehicles, uh, and they don't have to feel afraid of going into the church and having a spread, you know?
I understand.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your, this opportunity. Uh, I'm, for now, then I'll just wait, okay?
Okay.
Pastor, still there?
Pastor, are you still there? We have a, uh, Ms. Alice has a question for you.
Yes, I'm still here. Yes, I just muted for a second.
How many of your, um, worshippers, um, are town residents? Do you know?
Uh, worshippers are town residents? No, um, I'm gonna say, right, right now, we don't have, um, town residents worshippers right now, no.
Approximately how many worshippers do you have that attend your church?
Worshippers that we have, um, two. Two worshippers that we have on our worship team, that sing. I'm sorry?
You have two people in your congregation?
No, what I mean is, I'm talk, you, you were asking me about the worship team. So, um, two singers, but, uh, church, no, churches, um, 15. 15. Yes, 15 people. That's in our church. Uh, we've been affected by COVID. So most of our services were, um, virtual through, um, Zoom, Facebook, um, live. We've been doing those until recently. We open on Sundays under, um, guidelines and limitations.
So with this.
I'm hearing like a lot of echo.
With this request of a, um, sound, uh, permit, would you be, uh, open to having to have a police detail with a decibel meter to kind of read the amount of, uh, noise coming out of the, uh, the church?
Yes, yes, uh, uh, um, we under the, understanding that the service would be outside on the parking lot, right? That's what you mean.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Could you say that again?
Okay, sure, sure, no worries. That, uh, um, you mean the service, the, the service outside, right? To have the police come and check the sound, right?
Right.
Yes, that's totally fine, of course.
So, Pastor, if we allow these services, you would, uh, have a decibel meter present, and you would pay for the police detail to monitor that, that, um, decibel meter to be sure that you're within the sound ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, Pastor, you realize that where your church is situated, there's very little foliage because of lanterns on one side and one 46 on the other to absorb that sound. So it's really going to fall. Last time we had it, people were not very happy in that neighborhood because it was a, should have been a nice quiet Saturday, Sunday, and it was not.
I, I apologize. I, um, I hear you like real muffled. I, I caught some of that, not all of it.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, I hear you a little better now, yes.
The place where your church is situated.
Okay.
Was not as much green to absorb sound. You have one 46 on the side, and you have 15 on the other side, where, uh, the houses are, uh, really, uh, in relative close proximity. The last time you had this, uh, outside gathering, there were complaints they weren't happy about, and they voiced that that it should have been a quiet day was far from that.
So.
So I got great reservations about a meeting outside. In one of the countries, uh, where people see this outside meeting from the road, some make it up, some they wanna join, which will create a problem. So what's your my opinion?
So I'm gonna be 100% honest. I have an idea of what you said, but I did not hear you at all. I heard the beginning, and then you're completely cut off. So it's pretty hard to have a conversation when you don't, I can't hear you at all. But I'm still gonna answer what you said. You mentioned you referenced a complaint that we had on one service over a year ago. Um, so, yes, so we, so we had one service outside. It was driving, driving, driving style right on our church property, and the service was less than two hours. And there was one particular neighbor that, um, decided to make complaints, uh, about the sound being too loud, but we were, the police came, and we had notified the police in advance, and we also had talked to the town officials. So, so your offices were contacted prior, uh, and we asked for legal advice, and they even, they even put the service on, on the town, uh, newsletter for weeks before we even gave a first service. And I also went around asking all the neighbors, and, and I also spoke to the landlord of our property. Everybody was aware that the service was gonna happen. We had the service, and that particular neighbor did complain, and I understand that. We complied with every single regulation that they're asked us to do. And I even add, after that one service that we gave, we stopped giving services at all. I just feel, we just feel that, um, we're trying to give, um, the community in our church, uh, a, an escape and an opportunity and an option. That way they can come in, they can come in their vehicles, and they can have a short hour, hour and a half service outside. Um, as far as, as, as far as the complaints, I have asked all the neighbors in the area, and they're totally okay. It happens to be one neighbor, and that one neighbor has complained, they complained, complained, complained. I was told that, that one neighbor complained for a, quite a little while after we just gave one service. It's been a year now. It's, it's been, it's been a, it's been a year now, and, uh, um, like I said, we've complied with everything. We wanna do everything, you know, uh, everything that we can to give, uh, the community an opportunity, and in reality, we just want to, um, give the community something, uh, so they can worship and they can feel, uh, some type of normal, you know?
Pastor, uh, I, uh, I did my diligence on this one. I went and I actually knocked on a few doors in the neighborhood, and I spoke to the police. And I'm gonna be honest with you, no disrespect, sir, but I'm not gonna be able to support your request because the neighbors that I spoke to, uh, well, they respect you, and they, they respect your right to, to practice. Uh, they were not in favor of, uh, us supporting this, um, you know, this request. So, uh, for that reason, I'm not gonna be able to support it. Uh, it doesn't mean that I have any disrespect for you, you or your church or, or your congregation, and just out of an abundance of caution, uh, after talking with the neighbors. And I did walk the neighborhood, and I did ask, I told some of the neighbors and the police. So for that reason, sir, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I will not be able to support this.
Okay. So I understand. I understand. This is exactly why I'm here. And I respected, um, everyone's, uh, the neighbor's opinions, cause I'm aware that they do live there, and I'm trying to be respectful, um, and, and mindful of, of them and their peace. So, and like I said, um, we only did that one service, and that was it, but, um, I understand.
And, and like I said, uh, we have all the respect for you and, and your, and for what, and what you're doing, and, uh, so please don't take it, uh, take any offense to it. We're just trying to, you know, keep everybody happy when we, uh, make decisions like this.
Okay, yes, I understand. I understand. I'm just a little, um, you know, uh, it's just, it's a little hard, you know, i- like anything, like everything in life, everything is, uh, you gotta make a decision, and you gotta be responsible. You know, it's just, it is what it is. I totally understand our situation.
Thank you. Uh, so now I will let it be a motion, uh, to approve the request for the outside, uh, excuse me, I will let it be a motion right now to, uh, to approve the outside audio, uh, system at, uh, Igniting Life, Igniting Life, Praise and Worship Center, 233 Eddie Dolly Highway. Okay. Oh, okay. So, okay, I apologize. Just a clarification. Is there a motion at this time? Two more. Okay. Is there a motion at this time regarding this request for the, uh, outdoor sound system? All right, so if I die through the line of, uh, motion. Okay, uh, moving on then, uh, whole business, uh, the special, but discussion by council vote on other action on update municipal building review task force. Uh, Mr. Nostrum, are you out there?
Yes, I am.
Are you out there?
I don't see him. Oh, there he is. Yeah, I see him.
Uh, Mr. Nostrum, uh, we can hear you, uh.
Can, can you hear me now?
You out there at this time? Would you like to be heard on this matter?
I unmuted it, so can you hear?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, um, at the February 24th, um, municipal task force building review meeting, uh, recommended that invoice number 18017 dash 33 dated February 1st, 2021 from Secoche Associates, uh, be approved by the council. This is up through January 31st, 2021. As opposed to other billing that you've seen, this one has a breakdown of the hour.
Yep, as you can see, we requested a breakdown, uh, the, everything be itemized, and, uh, the invoice is itemized, uh, uh, the total of $960. Anybody have any questions, Nostrum?
I have a question. Is there any way that they can itemize this? I mean, all through the, you know, the date and the amount of hours, and they kind of describe what they did on this time, like what they worked on? It really doesn't give us any more of our information than, you know, this total amount.
It's, it's difficult to hear you, but, uh, I can, I think what you're asking about is what the hours worked on, if you look up above on that second page, it's contract administration and closeout. Our architect, the town's architect is helping the, uh, legal council preparing for mediation.
I was. Just to think that it can be broken out a little bit more, but this is, should be something on a description on each day what was done, but. Is there any way that we can get a little bit more information going forward when they do put these breakouts?
Mr. Nostrum, I don't know if you're here, but now what was, what, what, what Ms. Alice is asking is, is any, going forward, is there any chance that we can get a little more detail in the, in the invoices of, I mean, it's a start. It's a lot more than we had last week, uh, last meeting, but can we just get more detail, is what she's asking, uh, regarding what was done during those hours instead of just putting in hours?
We know what that was done. He, he's answering, he's answering questions from the lawyer, looking at the contract specs. He's meeting with us. That's all part of the, uh, construction administration and closeout part of this contract.
So is it all only rate, is what you said at this time?
Right. So he, he put in six hours, and if you look, that's January 4th, January 8th, January 11th, and January 14th.
I'm sorry, sitting on the council, I just, I think it's our job to know what's been done during these timeframes, and just to have a generalized, um, description, just because the building task force knows what was done. I still think everyone else needs to know what was done, and I'm just asked going forward that there was more description for every day and the amount of hours and what was done during that time.
I mean, short of meeting with you in executive session and talking about details of what was going on, I really don't feel comfortable breaking, to, giving you details of what his hours are being spent on. We're aware of it. We work with him. I.
Yeah, like, I would say, just to play devil's advocate here, I mean, I would say maybe just what, uh, one hour consulting with, uh, attorney, that three hours consulting with the, you know, just what, what was taking place during those hours, that maybe we could just ask him for a little more detail. Consulting with executive session, with board during executive session, just to itemize a, a little more.
Yeah, yeah.
To know the fact of the name. We don't know what we're putting in there, other than this code number and construction.
So we can ask him that, right? I mean, we should, there's no issue. I'm sure we can ask him for a little more detail going forward. Does anybody else have any, uh, for any further questions, Mr. Nostrum? Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve invoice number 18017 dash 33, Secocheo and Associates, the amount of $960. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Bad, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, I'll second that. Now, how about any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
No.
It's bad, any, uh, you recall for the roll call, yes or no?
Are you calling me?
Yeah. Yeah, roll call. You're right up for approval of the invoice, yes or no?
Yes.
He said yes. Yes.
I couldn't hear Joanne at all. Did that pass?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
The sound is terrible.
We're doing our best. I know, uh, we're working on it.
I know.
You're muddling through this, right?
I can hear you, John. Some, I can't hear Joanne at all.
Okay. All right, so let's move on then. Um, at this time, I will recuse myself and ask Vice President Alice to take over with this agenda right. Ms. Alice?
Old business, B, public hearing, press for getting A portion of old tip, so it's up to the platform, lots, 46, 47, 48, 48A, 49, 431, 316. My name, a motion to open the public hearing. So. Second?
Second.
Session for the open meeting.
Adam President? Adam President?
I don't want to get this. Yeah, you're unmuted.
Madam President, can you hear me?
Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you fine, Cynthia.
I know, I don't think they can hear you. That's why I was trying to get their attention.
Can the solicitor hear me? I can hear you. Can you hear? David, are we gonna get ourselves in trouble trying to run this meeting with, with such poor audio, um, going on right now, that people are gonna complain this is not a, a legal and legitimate meeting? Well, I think you, they just got to continue to work on it. They should re, recite whatever motion is taken or whatever vote is taken. I can't, I can't hear the motions being made. I can't hear seconds, um, you know? And we just asked the president to recite the motions and the votes as they're being taken, that's all. I don't know if you can hear me.
I don't think they can hear us, David. Hello? Can anybody hear us?
All right, listen, listen, listen. We can hear you.
Somebody has, somebody has to have on a Zoom meeting on another device, two devices in that room. That's why we're getting an echo, number one. Number two, the feedback could be coming because the microphones are not pointed toward the walls. Someone's is pointed up toward the ceiling and is getting feedback through the speaker system.
All right, so. Okay, can you hear me? That's, that's, all right, here we go. All right, so listen, we're not gonna, we're gonna continue forward with this meeting, we're gonna get through this, we have some technical difficulties, and we're gonna work through it. Okay, everybody's just gonna have to deal with us, I apologize. So, how are we leaving now? I recuse Ms. Allison, we'll be handling this agenda item, and.
Madam President?
All right, folks, we're gonna try and couple of things, just deal with this, take a break real quick, a couple minute break.
Mr., I apologize, Beladron, representing the applicant.
Mr. Beladron?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Beladron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Is there anything else you want, in addition to what's contained within my letter of December 28th, which spells out the reason?
Did you just want to summarize it for anyone that's listening on the meeting, or?
Sure. The petition is being submitted as part of an application by Holliston Sand Company, to construct a net metering, what's called a behind the meter, 4.89 solar array on its real property, for which the planning board approved an administrative subdivision plan on 3/9, dated 3/9/20, and recorded in Plan Book 1, page 461. State law authorizes your town council to abandon any highway or driftway, or any part thereof that has ceased to be useful to the public. This portion of Old Tiff Road that we're talking about here was never dedicated by deed to the town, and nor has been developed, nor useful to members of the public, and as part of the master plan approval, we're asking that the, that section of Old Tiff Road be abandoned. I could not hear what he said, respectfully.
Okay, could you just confirm the assessment's platform lot numbers, if you can, they have a cycle of the agenda, or is it actually?
You want the assessment's platform lot number?
Yes, please. Can you just confirm what they are, please?
Okay, it's assessment's platform, lots 46, 47, 48, 48A, 49, 431, and 319.
Thank you. Anyone else have one, please? Let's take a motion to close the public hearing. Second? Any other second?
Ms. Allen?
Yeah.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneev?
I didn't even hear what the motion was. Could you please repeat the motion?
Yeah, just a.
Mr. Badneev, the motion to close the public hearing after we had Mr. Beladron's case, and we got to the petition to abandon a portion of Old Tiff Road.
This is just a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Well, the council just approved the abandonment of the section of Old Tiff Road. All councilors voted yes. With the exception of Mr. Biarrah, I recuse himself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, did you, did you take two votes, or one vote?
I'm confusing myself, Ms. Wiggliozzi.
Madam President?
Yes.
Did you take two votes, a vote to close the public hearing, and a second vote to approve it? Or have you only taken one vote so far?
We're gonna do that right now. I only took a vote to close the public hearing.
That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So now we can have a motion to approve the abandonment of a portion of Old Tiff Road assessment's platform, lot 46, 47, 48, 48A, 49, 431, and 319.
Madam President, I make a motion that we abandon the portion of Old Tiff Road reflected of assessment's platform lot numbers based on the recommendation of the planning board.
That's a motion, do I have a second? Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneev?
Yes.
Just to confirm that all councilors voted yes, with the exception of Mr. Biarrah, who recuses himself to abandon a portion of Old Tiff Road assessment platform, lot 46, 47, 48, 48A, 49, 431, and 319.
Madam President, is it 319 or 316?
It's 319, there was a specific on the agenda, and Mr. Beladron, I confirm that it's 319.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. C, discussion by council, vote on other action on membership of municipal building review task force. Mr. Badneev, do you want to have anything to say on this matter?
Excuse me?
Discussion by council, we're going on, we moved on to C at this time, discussion by council, vote on other action on membership on municipal building review task force.
Yes, at the last meeting, I was looking to be reappointed to the task force, tabled at the last meeting, I still have that same request in.
Okay, now, I'm just a little confused, because I did look at the resolutions that created the task force, and nowhere does it indicate that, basically, it's, it's a position is to continue to serve until duly appointed successor, there's no expiration date on your current, you know, on your current appointment. Did you hear any of that?
I can hear you.
So.
The point, the point being is, in the discussion with the, with the solicitor, with the new council seated, this council should take action on my appointment as a member of the council. I understand that I can serve until I am reappointed, but at this time, I'd like to be reappointed by this council.
Mr. Wiggliozzi, although it doesn't say it in the, in the resolutions, in the two resolutions that are addressing this board, would it be okay to honor his request and appoint him to, reappoint him to the board, if that's what he wants?
It's definitely up to the council. The way the resolutions, after reviewing both resolutions, I, I'm satisfied that everybody continues to serve until further action of the council. The question that was raised, I thought, and I gotta be honest, what I thought was on the agenda was only your resignation. I don't see any appointment on the agenda.
Okay, so, Mr. Badneev, per your request, what I would like to do is, I'll ask the clerk to put your reappointment on the agenda for the next meeting, just so we can be as transparent as possible, and, you know, so everybody understands what we're doing here. Do you have any objection to that, sir?
You're the president, sir.
Well, I'm just trying to.
This was tabled from the last meeting, it should have been put on this agenda. There's a lot going, there's a lot going on, Mr. President, right now with this, and I want to make sure that my seat sitting here is secure, before I continue to spend hours and hours of my time, days of my time, working for the town's benefit, without having this council reappoint me. I asked at the last meeting, it was tabled through this meeting, I assumed it was on the agenda for this meeting. Mediation coming up, and I would like to know that this board is backing my position sitting on this task force. That's the request that I had two weeks ago, it was tabled to tonight.
I, I'm not gonna argue with you, I don't think it was actually tabled to tonight, I think we were, we were confused as to whether or not it was even necessary, but, having said that, instead of trying to find fault as to why it's not on the agenda, why don't we disagree that it's gonna be on the agenda? At the next meeting, and I'll publicly tell you right now, I support you 1,000%, so, whatever that's worth, I'm only one, one floor on the votes, but I just don't feel comfortable making a vote right now, if something's not on the agenda. I want to be as open, have an open policy as possible, and I, I respect the work that you've done so far, and the time that you've put in, and all I can ask is that you just have faith in the system, and, you know, continue, continue the progress that you're making with this, with this board, I think everybody on the board is doing a great job. So we'll continue, yeah, so you're gonna be continuing, your position's gonna be solid right now, and you're gonna be appointed, well, until the appointment comes up, so you are duly member, duly appointed member of that board as we speak, and you will continue to be, and then we're gonna vote, well, not on the agenda, or a vote at the next meeting, but at least it will be itemized on the agenda, so everybody understands what's gonna happen. All right, so. Moving on to number one, resignation, I, while we're on the subject, I pretended my resignation last week, actually, it was on February 17th, on the municipal building review task force, and I just make a motion that the council accept my resignation to the building review task force.
We accept the resignation, Mr. Corvo?
Thank you. Now, we have the motion. We have a second? We have a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen? Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneev?
Yes.
Mr. Biarrah?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, if we can, I know that he's sitting right there, but we should send a letter, as, as any board member will see further up, there's another one coming up, we should send a letter to any of, any of these board members that have stepped down, a letter of thanks for their service to the town.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Badneev. Okay, moving on now. Discussion by council, vote on other action on change order number three, Forestale Schoolhouse exterior restoration project. Ms. Dances?
Think Mr. Keen or Mr. Harris can speak on that, I think they're both on.
Mr. Harris, are you out there?
Yes, I'm here.
So if I read this right, so we're looking at change order for $5,535, is that just the three windows?
That's just for the three windows to remove the sashes and restore them into operating conditions, and put them back in place. It's spelled out in the change order number three. There's a, there's a couple of panes that need to be replaced.
Uh, it's spelled out in the change order number three. There's a, there's a couple of panes that need to be replaced.
Okay, just so everybody understands, we're looking at the three, the schoolhouse, three windows that actually face the school street, you see, you drive by, correct?
Yes, that is correct. The, the three windows, uh, the two first floor and the attic window facing school street.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, I have a question. I'm looking for, um, the finance director. Does the, um, project association have to get three bids for something just like the town does, or are they, um, that or not?
No, it's, it's... Go ahead, Cynthia.
It's coming from the funds from the town. They have to follow the procurement rules that we follow. But this is the contract that's already been signed and approved, and they're just changing the order, so, uh, we don't have to do that with this process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Harris, or Mr. Heisos at this time regarding this? Okay, is there one to approve change order number three in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, the, the additional work on the three windows facing school street?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve change order number three of the Faro- the Forestale Schoolhouse Exterior Restoration Projects to Architectural Preservation Group in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars for the three windows on the, on the front facade of the building.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, uh, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. And for the record, if, uh, we have any hearing difficulties, uh, the council disapproved, uh, unanimously the change order number three.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, uh, something we've been waiting for for a long time right here. Uh, E, discussion by council vote on other action on appointments to the Hallwell Review Committee. Uh, so I think it worked out well last time when we, when we did, so one of the, the way we're gonna do it is I will, uh, we'll entertain a motion, we'll get a second, and then that person will be, uh, will be a nomination, and then we'll come back and we, and we'll, we'll have all the nominations, uh, and seconds that are up, and then we'll go back and vote for comments we're gonna make. So, uh, the first position that we're looking for is the Town Council Liaison, two-year term, ending, ending December first, two thousand and two. This is the Town Council appointment of a Town Council member, and I would, uh, at this time, I would like to take the effort further to nominate, uh, Councilor Nicole to this, to this board. Do we have a second for Mr. Carbo? Do we have a second? Okay, do we have any other nominations for, from the Town Council, for a Town Council member to be sitting on this board? Okay, so back to Mr. Carbo, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Okay, so now what we're gonna have is the, uh, we're gonna, there are six two-year terms. Ending, I'm sorry. Okay, two, six two-year terms ending December first, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, there were a couple of late additions, uh, and the council has, has received those applications and names. Uh, does anybody have any names that they would like to put forward to serve on the Hallwell today?
Mr. President?
Ms. Al?
I would like to nominate Christopher Simkins to serve one of the two-year terms ending twelve one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do we have a second for Mrs. Simkins?
Second.
Mrs. O'Hara, a second, Zach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have the nominations?
Uh, yeah, I nominate, uh, Scott Savigny.
Uh, we have a, we have a, a nomination from Mr. Scott Savigny. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Any other nominations? I would like to take this opportunity and nominate, uh, Tony Gerton. Do you have a second? Do we have a second for Mr. Gerton?
A second?
Mrs. Simkins?
Yeah, I have a second.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, do we have any other nominations? Uh, we nominated this time, uh, Mr. Bob Mayo. Do we have a second for Mr. Mayo? This is for the Hallwell, so on Hallwell. Oh, we have a second for Mr. Mayo. Any other nominations?
One.
Who's that? Mr. Carbo, do you have a nomination?
Yeah, I have a nomination. I don't know if we mentioned this first, uh, but, uh, Frank Hallwell.
We have a nomination for Mr. Hallwell, but we have a second for Mr. Hallwell. Also, I give Mr. Hallwell. Any other nominations? I would take this time and I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Bobby Bradford. Do I, do I have a second for Mr. Bradford?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations up there? Looking for six, correct? No other nominations? Okay. Okay, so, uh, since there's no other nominations, I'll, I'll, we'll start back where we, go back to where we began. Uh, the first nomination, I believe, was, uh, was it Christopher Simkins? Any discussion on Mrs. Simkins? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. And then from there, we went to, uh, who was next up, Madam? Scott Savigny. Any discussion on Mrs. Savigny? Roll call, please, for Mrs. Savigny.
Ms. Al? Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. All right, then, uh, Mr. Tony Gerton, any discussion on Mr. Gerton? Roll call, please, for Mr. Gerton.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Frank Hallwell, any discussion on Mr. Hallwell? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Bobby Bradford. Any discussion on Mr. Bradford? Roll call.
Mr. President, I did not see any, um, application for Mr. Bradford.
Yeah, that was, that came in late. Uh, there was an email that was put out, uh, you must, it came in a little late, uh, however, he did submit an application. Uh, we do have it, uh, it was, uh, handed out, uh, to everybody that was here, and there was also an email that was put out with his, uh, request. So he met all the, you know, he did what he had to do. He, he followed the protocol that was given to him in town news land, so... Just, it, it just got to us a little late. Okay, so, uh, roll call, Mr. Bradford, please.
Ms. Al? Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. And, uh, Mr. Bob Mayo. Anybody have any discussion with Mr. Mayo? Roll call, Mr. Mayo, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Any other one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a, um, Hallwell today. Oh, we don't have a Hallwell today yet. Uh, we have one more. Oh, we have the planning board liaison. A two-year term ending, ending in, uh, twelve one twenty-two. This is, uh, appointed by the Town Council. And it is, uh, I guess we recommended that Mr. Porter was the, uh, representing the planning board. So I would make a motion to nominate, uh, Mr. Porter. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on Mr. Porter? Roll call, Mr. Porter, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Uh, Mrs. Zulinski, uh, you have an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm going to appoint Mr. Robert Najarian to be the chairperson of the zoning board.
Okay, we will not be voting on that. That's your appointment?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So now we have Hallwell today, correct? Okay. Do you have a second here? Uh, discussion by council vote on other action on budget committee resignation from Mr. Phil Godfrey. Uh, I will, uh, ask the clerk to, um, advertise this position in the next newsletter before we make a decision on, uh, on appointments. Okay, so we're gonna continue that until the next meeting. Discussion by council vote on other action on juvenile hearing board. Uh, James Tracy, uh, passed away and was thrown, and that created an opening for the, uh...
Mr. President, one quick nomination?
Uh, yeah, hold on, one second. Okay, uh, we have an appointment to the juvenile hearing board, a completion of, like, the completion of a three-year term expiring on December first, two thousand and twenty-two. Mrs. O'Hara, do you have a nomination?
Yes. Denise Gertrun?
Denise Gertrun, okay. Do we have a second for Ms. Gertrun? I would like a second, Ms. Gertrun. Do we have any other nominations?
President?
Ms. Al?
I would, uh, I would, uh, I would nominate for Mary Ann Cardella for the, for the term of three-year term expiring on December first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, do we have a second for, uh, Mary Ann Cardella? Is there a second for Mary Ann Cardella? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so we're back to the top then. Uh, is there any discussion on Denise Gertrun at this time? Uh, roll call for Denise Gertrun.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes.
Mr. President, did we take any action on the resignation of Mr. Godfrey?
Uh, yeah, you might not have heard, what I said was, we're gonna, I asked the clerk to, uh, advertise the position, and, um, we will, uh, make it an, uh, appointment at the next meeting.
Should we accept his letter of resignation?
Okay, I, I thought I did, but, okay, we, uh, can we motion to exempt Mr. Godfrey's letter of resignation?
Removed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Björk?
Yes. Okay, C, discussion by council vote on other action on review of ordinance six point one nine, water supply protection, to be sent back to the planning board review. Uh, I asked that this was put on the agenda because Mr. Najarian reached ultimate. Uh, we are not proposing, this is not the council, is not proposing a change. This is not a first reading of a proposed ordinance. This is just a request from Mr. Najarian, who is the chairman of the zoning board, asking that the planning board review the ordinance and make or not make whatever changes, and then send it back to the council. He's just asking for a review of the ordinance, and he has some suggestions that he would like them to look at, but this is not a council, uh, request. This is just coming from, we're just following this, and I spoke with Mr. Kravitz about this, and he would like, he's asked the council to direct the, uh, the planning board to just review it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Badnees?
I make a motion that we the planning board for a review ordinance six point one nine water supply protection district review and an update to the council.
Mr. President, Mr. Kravitz on that?
Hi, I am, uh, we have a motion, I'll give a second, and then we'll discuss. Uh, do we have a second? We have a second for discussion. Mr. Kravitz, are you there?
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Uh, Mr. Kravitz, uh, we discussed this, so if you can just explain to the, uh, to the rest of the council what we talked about?
Yeah, you got a letter from Mr. Najarian. It was a memo to yourself and Paul Zulinski, and the proper procedure is to have the Town Council, uh, remand this to the, to the planning board for a review, uh, if you so choose.
And basically, yeah. And just, Badnees, you have a, we have a motion and a second. Any, anybody have any questions with Mr. Badnees?
If, if, uh, Mr. President, uh, the planning board is going to review this, I'd also like to suggest that Mr. Najarian would be present if they have him, but I'm sure he will.
Yeah, just a little background, uh, since you brought that up. Uh, Mr. Najarian originally requested a joint meeting between the planning board and the zoning board. Uh, after discussing this with Mr. Kravitz and Ms. Wiggliozzi, better way to handle this is that, uh, it goes back to the planning board, and Mr. Najarian at that time can, uh, speak up at the, you know, he can attend the, yeah, the planning board meeting, and one other member of the zoning board, if he wishes, can attend, and they can make whatever recommendations they want to. I think that'd be a better way to go than having a joint meeting between the two boards. Correct? Yeah, right. Anything else? Yeah, roll call on that, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo? Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnees?
Yes.
Mr. Björk?
Yes. Uh, discussion by council vote on other action on water bid for Department of Public Works six-wheeled dump truck of a plow.
Are you skipping Pacheco Park?
I did, I was just brought, uh, Ms. Al, just brought that to my attention. I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, we're gonna go back up. Uh, the D, discussion by council vote on other action on, on proposed reservation reclass for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, Pacheco Park ender. Uh, Mr. Heisos, um, being that the wording on this is a little vague, can we reword it to make it a little more clear as to what's going on, where we're reappropriing the money from and to, a dollar amount? And then we'll just, since there's no urgency, then we'll just put it on the next agenda, just give it a little more, so people understand a little more of what's going on here.
Sure, um, I, I don't know if, um, the solicitor wants to chum in on this. I think you can just tell me what the, what you want me to word it out, and we can... I think you can just tell me what the, what you want me to word it out, and we can-
I can, but I'd rather, I'd rather be clear on the agenda, so that's what I'm trying to do. I'd rather that-
So we'll put it on the, okay.
I, I just want the agenda, so someone to read the agenda and know exactly what we're doing before we even get there.
Okay, I understand. All right, so what do you, you want me to tell you now, or do you want to wait?
No, we'll, we'll work it out, because we'll talk on the dollar amount and where the account that it's coming from, the account it's going to, and it will be clearly stated on the agenda.
Okay.
For the next meeting, okay, Ms. Carr?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
Uh, discussion by council vote on other action on award of bid for PPW Six-Wheeled Dump Truck with a Plow. Is Mr. Pedigast there?
Yeah, but I could talk about it, unless Ray wants to talk about it.
Okay, that's fine.
So this was-
Mr. Pedigast, do you want to add anything to this?
Uh, no, it's a low bid, so the finance director can take care of it.
Okay.
So there was an award, there was a bid opening on February 23rd, for a PPW Six-Wheeled Dump Truck with a Plow. The lowest bidder was Rhode Island Truck Center for $172,028. And that will be funded by the 2021 capital budget. And in your package, you should have all the bids, the tax tool.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jesus or Mr. Pedigast? Okay, I will entertain a motion to award Rhode Island Truck Center a bid for the dump truck with a plow in the amount of $172,328. Do we have a motion? Motion approved?
Removed.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Iglesias?
Because I, I see in your package, you have the buyer's retail order. If this is the only documentation that's going to be issued by the town, or received by the town, does the, does the, does the finance director know if this is the only documentation that needs to be executed?
Executed, what do you mean, like signed?
Signed and/or purchase order, so they, in other words, if you need something else to be signed, then it has to have another meeting. If this is it, I would just authorize the purchase order and/or execution of this document if necessary.
What usually happens is I send them an award letter with the purchase order.
So you don't need any further authorization for the administrator yourself?
Unless Ray can chime, chime into that, and if they need something signed, I, I don't, I would, I don't know.
Normally not. Whatever the finance director sends with the purchase requisition is usually suffice.
Just trying to save you a step, Mr. Director.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay, so are we comfortable with the motion and the second that we got for the approval of $172,328?
Oh, no, I'm fine with the motion in this, and the motion that was made. I just wanted to make sure there was no other authorization that either the director or the finance director wanted. Otherwise, obviously, you'll be back here in two weeks.
Make the motion, I'll try and come on.
Okay, so first we'll make a second motion, and then back to that. So we have a motion and a second to approve, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve the review. Mrs. Lepita, will I have a signature? All right, so we have a motion and a second on this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes. And I will entertain a motion to authorize the administrative, for a signature for the purchase of the truck with the plow at Rhode Island Truck Center for $172,328. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves? Yes. Mr. Carbo? Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, discussion by council vote on other action on appointment. Uh, you don't need our approval on this, I think you say?
No, but if you may, forget it.
Okay.
This, this project, it is, I will lift, one born and some three. Uh, I'll get the watchful eye of Alan Booth came in, assisted in the assessment of the deputy assessive skill set. And in the package, you'll see a letter, a test find that here's the caliber to be appointed to the town, assess the law which I'm doing, it's a-
And you would like to appoint Jennifer St. Joseph?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, you want, is that, you don't need to vote on that, though?
Oh, I don't believe I do, but if you want to take a vote, just, uh-
I'd rather, sorry, President, you have the nomination.
Okay, then I just appoint you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I will now entertain a moment to the- Well, may I?
Night.
Good evening.
Good night.